We'll call the panel select board meeting to order on Thursday, June 19th at 7:00 PM for the following agenda approval. Prove the minutes of 6:12-14. Warrants, mail, transfer station supervisor, monthly board meeting. Old business town treasurer in preference to budget adjustments needs. Under new business, we're going to have the town insurance review by David Newell as well as insurance agents to present the town insurance information. Then we'll talk about decision for insurance. That's the thing we'll do last, actually. And then we have a person here that requests for a letter to support the Western New England Greenway. I would like to move that first under new business if the board would agree to that.
That's fine.
Because the others are going to take a little while. Anything else to be added to the agenda before we approve it? Okay, I need a motion approved.
Make a motion approve.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approve with the minutes of 6:12-14.
Almost. Seconds.
Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Warrants. Counts payable ending 6/20/2014 in the amount of $14,686.28. That's contract five interest payment. Counts payable ending in 6/2014 in the amount of $31,088.85. There was, it's a large of waste management, $2,200 and something, $20,000 for administrative charges. It's a transfer of funds from one to another, road to the general, which brings it up. Well, you take the 20 away, you see, for this. That's the majority. To that one. Hey. Payroll report ending 6/2014 in the amount of $7,009.33. Much pleasure, guys.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion on any of them? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have from our auditors, a report dating where they went through and looked at both the warrants and the payroll. And after the review, they found no errors. They did a sampling of time sheets plus the counts payables and gave us a report. And I appreciate that type of reporting to us that gives a little detail like that. Gives us information to work with. Plan ahead. Panel transfer station will be closed Friday, July 4th and Saturday, July 5th for the 4th of July holiday. Again, July 4th, Friday and Saturday, July 5th, our transfer station will be closed. Plan accordingly. Transfer station person is here, so I'll let him do this. He'll all send a reminder that there will be a pre-paint drop off in Bennington at the municipal parking lot, 205 South Street, Bennington, Vermont on Saturday, June 21st, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. I'll let you talk in more detail what can be and can't be dropped. Board of listers requesting an additional 30-day extension be granted. What's your pleasure?
This on top of the other one?
Department of Texas. We're always requesting an additional 30-day extension. Be granted. So, yes.
I make a motion to sign it.
Second. Any further discussion? We're waiting on some records and stuff so that they can get this done. And that's what's where they're at at this point. It just needs some time.
It can, it can get completed in another 30 days, but no problem.
Can you answer that question? Only the listers can.
Okay.
But, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll send this down through and you all can sign it. It'll end up in Lindisland down there. Hey.
Now, not to offset our, these extensions, is there a date that we should?
Well, there's, if you read the second sheet, there's a state statute where they have to have something.
Okay, we haven't have it done by so-and-so. Okay, that's just a question. Good, very good.
They have to have something sent in by a certain date.
Okay, okay, okay.
Required.
Okay. So then everything is moving forward, supposedly.
At the best of my knowledge.
Okay, very good.
Has everybody had a chance to read the letter that we want to send to the Vermont Agency of Transportation to do with US Route 7? Both referring to the gravel bed and to the narrowness of the road that goes from Schoolhouse Road to Bennington? Y'all had a chance to read this? It's basically talking about the concerns with it that we talked about last week with the gravel trucks coming in and out and also about the safety on the road. If you're in agreement with this letter, I'll take a motion to sign it so we can mail it to them.
Make a motion to sign it.
Any discussion further?
That's just for signs, right?
This is?
Just signage.
Yeah, just signs.
Yeah, okay.
And the concern about the rest of the road?
Yeah. It's basically requesting any type of signage you can along the road to help improve safety of people. Both bicyclists, hikers and slow-moving vehicles, et cetera. Okay? Any, any other discussion?
There was something, and I don't know. Did we mention anything about speed?
Yeah.
From there to manage that for safety?
We didn't.
The site, basically the thing, we didn't, but what it says here, the site is a 50 mile an hour speed zone and close to the north end of the 45 mile an hour speed zone when it talked about the gravel bed. Basically, they didn't refer to the 40 mile an hour and then the 50 to Bennington, but what it talked about is it becomes windy, hilly from there to North Bennington. North, from there, north to Bennington.
Yes.
There are no shoulders, limited pullouts, one pullout just north of the panel Bennington line was recently closed. We are concerned because this section of highway is used by touring bicyclists, by slow-moving farm equipment. For example, one of our major dairy farms, which is situated off of US 7 use of the highway to access agricultural land many times from their farm and on the far side of Bennington. In the past, numerous accidents have occurred in this stretch of highway and any help of preventing possible future ones from occurring would be greatly appreciated. We request appropriate signage to warn motors to watch out for slow-moving vehicles, bicyclists for this section from panel center north to Bennington.
I was just wondering if, if we should mention that. Because that should be one more thing to mention.
To have a slow, slower traffic.
Well, they should, they should address it.
Well, I think this will start a discussion here. I mean, obviously, it's going to be a, I don't think there'll be discussion back and forth over without.
Okay.
Or a resolution, you know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't expect them to always do that, but, but then again, you never know, right?
Well, this request went in with the understanding that we weren't asking for a speed study, which would take a lot of time.
Long time.
And a long process. This went in, let's get some signage up and make, make some progress now.
We can address that at a later date.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
I'll get you a, good.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have a town of panel grant anticipated note for $486,831.85. It is at 1.6% per annum. And it's the 19th day of June 2015 with a 10% meanwhile at the rate of what I stated. So, what's your pleasure here? I think we got three places to sign. We got more notes.
I'll move.
Lot of places to sign?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so what's your pleasure, guys?
Don't move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
To make me sign in three places just to hope that they can read one of those signatures. Okay, well, that goes down too. We also have the Vermont League of Cities and Towns wrap up brochure for what ended Do, does the transfer station supervisor mind if we move Bruce up ahead of him? The board's in agreement with that? Well. No, P, it goes to you. Come on up. There's a mic right there. Just come on up to it and you can sit, hold it up if you wish.
Yeah, I'm going to lay this out here just for reference, so we'll talk about it. This is a poster from the Western New England Greenway ride that we did last year. The Western New England Greenway is basically just a right line on a map that runs from Norwalk, Connecticut to the Canadian border. And in Norwalk, it joins up with the East Coast Greenway, which is a bicycle and a hiking route that runs all the way from Maine to Florida. It's 3,000 miles. And the idea with, with these greenways is you start out just as a marked route on public route, roads. But as time goes on and you have people who want to donate money to moving your right-of-way off the road on the private property or buying property along the way, you do that. Same way the Appalachian Trail was built. And the East Coast Greenway now has 1,000 miles of that 3,000 miles off-road. And most of it's the places where you don't want to be on the road. It's New York City, Washington DC and that sort of thing. That's where the video is. So our hope is that at the first, this is just a touring route. We've developed maps. We've done turn-by-turn instructions for the whole route. I'll give you a sample of the panel section. There are actually six maps that cover the whole route from Connecticut to Canada. And in Canada, of course, it hooks up with their bicycle system, the route there to go on to Montreal if you want. So this is just a little segment showing the routing through here. Excuse me for the misspelling of Burlington Road. That was a slip when they printed the maps. But as you, as you can see from the queue sheet and from the maps, we come across the line on Route 7. But we're only on it in the good shoulder part for about two miles when we go up to Burlington Road, get off on Burlington and then there's a little jump on 7 to get on to Barber Pond Road, Middle Panel, Maple Grove, and we go into Bennington on South Street. So we're avoiding the section of Route 7 that you just written your letter about. The idea here is to build a route that's interesting, that pretty much keeps the bicycle traffic away from the main traffic routes where they see more scenic views like Burlington Road. And also, a lot of our support is coming right now from the National Heritage Partnerships, who are trying to increase tourism around historic sites and, and other features along the way that point to the area's heritage. And as you know, along this, that's one of the great things about this route. You can't go five miles through Western Vermont without passing a historic site or a marker from something that relates to the history of the area. So this will be something we think the cyclists and tourists will really enjoy. So, as you know, well, cycle touring is, is growing on a percentage basis, faster than any other kind of touring in the country. Part of that's economic, part of that's because people just like getting out on bikes to cover this distance. They can do this route in little pieces, town to town, or they can ride the whole thing. In July, we'll be riding the route from north to south. Last year, we rode it from south to north. So we're just proving out the route, making sure we got all our queuing instructions correct and the maps marked correctly. But this year, we're inviting more people to go with us. There's a core group of about 10 riders that are going to do the whole thing. So it's, you know, it's not a big event. But probably around Bennington, Manchester, Fairhaven, we'll try to arrange group rides as well to ride in with us the day we come through the area. So you may be seeing more riders that third week in July coming through as well. What I'm really here for is that we're trying to get the Western New England Greenway, which we've already got mapped out, designate it part of what it's called the US Bike Route System. There's a federal agency that's overseeing the definition of a network of bicycle routes that'll cover the whole country. And we're trying to get this route designated as what'll be called US Bike Route 7. Even though it doesn't use much of Route 7, it, it just follows the seven quarters. So that's what we're at. In order to do that, in order to get that designation, we have to have letters of support from every municipal authority all the way along the route, that they think the route's a good idea and that you're willing to support it. You look on the back of the sheet there, I've included template sample letter of, you know, that we can mold into it. We still need to fill in a couple of the blanks as far as signatures and things like that. But that's, that's really what I'm looking for. And we'll forward this to the Vermont Agency of Transportation, who takes care of actually making the application for Vermont. All three states will apply for the designation for US Bike Route 7. The people who do the authorization know we're coming. So we're, it's just our job now to get all the letters of support together. We've got the route designated. The signatures are the only thing. The only other thing that comes into this is in the future, we will want to sign the route. That'll be at no cost to any of the municipalities along the route. We will raise the money for the signage. But we're asking at this point to have permission to post the signs along the roads. As much as possible, they'll be on existing poles. If poles are required, we'll supply those as well. And we'll coordinate with, with all of the town highway authorities to get those placed. But again, there's no cost for the signs to you. This is basically what the signs will look like once we get them, once we get the, the route approved. And again, what they've done most of the, in most places in northern Vermont, where they've already designated a route, is just put them on the regular street sign posts. Because that's a convenient place for a cyclist to look. Since cyclists don't need them at highway speeds. So it's much easier to do the same. Are there any questions I can answer about what we're after or what we're trying to do?
Sir, does this just stay on Route 7?
No.
Will you take like existing bike paths, like the one that runs from North Adams?
Yes, the Asher-Wiltco Trail will be part of it.
Yes, okay.
In Connecticut, there's a couple of other off-road routes that have been designated. And when we get to the northern part of the state, we will use the Lake Champlain Bike Way, which is already marked. It's mostly on public roads, except where it goes to Burlington. But it's already marked there and this route will just tie into that.
So it won't be a total Route 7?
Oh, no. In the total route, which is 450 miles, I think we're on Route 7 for a total of about 20 miles.
Okay.
And, you know, there's like three miles here at the border where we cross from Williamstown. And then we go off on Burlington Road and take South Street into Bennington.
I am a little bit curious about road conditions. When you mentioned Burlington Road, because I'm not a bicyclist, but I do know that there's different class bikes and, and certain bikes that are only going to handle certain terrain.
Right.
How, are you going to ask the town in any way to?
No.
For road improvements or?
No. See, there's, the cyclists who are riding this route now are expecting some gravel roads, some dirt roads. We, we even talked about using old military road, but there's problems with the right-of-way there or we would have come through there. And the climb, of course, getting up there from Williamstown is challenging. Now, we, what we do is, on the website where the mapping is, we advise them, you want to use tires that at least an inch and a quarter in size. Other than that, you'll be fine. Because it's gravel and hardpan most of the way where it's not pavement. And that's enough to support a bike. But you're right, the, the little 23-millimeter tires, they're not going to have much fun on this route. So we just warn them ahead of time and then it's up to them.
I got a question.
I followed some bicyclists down today, down Barber Pond Road. Mm-hmm. And they're riding side by side. I got a truck that weighs, you know, four, five thousand pounds. I gotta ride my brakes to follow these guys down through there. They're not licensed. They're not registered. They're not paying any gas tax. So I'm kind of wondering what, what this is going to do. Is it going to plug up? Got a farmer here, he uses these roads.
Yep.
He's going down through there with a piece of machinery. What's he got to do? Stop for a bunch of bicyclists?
No, I.
Williams College has these events. What do they do? They come up Route 7, which is fine. Route 7 has a breakdown line. Get over there where you belong, or whatever. But no, they go down North Panel Road. So I'm not a bicycle fan.
I understand.
As you can see, and they don't have any skin in the game. Here we go again. They don't pay nothing. I have to pay to go on these roads and pay to maintain them.
There's, you know, that's a, that's a long discussion.
A long discussion. That's a long question.
We can go into it.
You answer that one.
But let me, almost everybody I know who owns a bike also owns a car. They buy gas for that car, they pay taxes, even if they don't have a car.
Do they interfere with the traffic? Do they like when the bicyclists interfere with them going somewhere or don't they have any place to go?
No, they.
I've got places to go.
They have the same thing, well, and, and the bicyclist has places to go too.
Right, but they don't need to be taking up the highway, what I'm saying.
I understand.
I sort of agree with Ronnie on this. I drive a 30,000 pound truck. It'd be a lot better if they at least stayed in a single file, but they'll go like three, four abreast. And here you are on this narrow road, blind corners, trying to get around them. There's not really that much consideration for the other traffic on the road, at least I don't believe so. I mean, they're almost the most dangerous thing out there.
All, all I can say is, you know, there, there are cyclists who obey the law and the law, and the law in Vermont.
Those rumble strips they put down, down in Mass are the best damn thing because at least it keeps them on the other side of the white line.
Yeah.
So the flow of traffic's really nice. But like Ronnie said, it's a breakdown line, so.
And, and if we've got the shoulder and if they've got the breakdown, I think they generally use it.
Why they do that.
But I, I will tell you that in Vermont, it's legal for them to ride two abreast. But riding three or four abreast is not legal. And also, if you're riding two abreast, it's, you, the law says you yield to overtaking traffic. That is, you single up to make way. I can, I can only tell you, you know, not a cyclist obeys the law. Well, it, it isn't really. It isn't really.
Let me ask the question differently.
Like I say, it's a long discussion.
Is, is there any training given to these people that are doing these bike tours? I know you do, there's groups that are professional type tours.
Right.
And so what, do they give any training to the people that they're taking on these tours to let them know this rules?
Yes, they do. And also, on the website where we provide the information, we have safety rules that we advise them about there, which is, you know, you can only ride, you can ride no more than two abreast. You single up when you have overtaking traffic, so as not to impede traffic.
Now, when you talk about signage that you put up for saying this is the tour route, do you have any signage that talks about the fact of two abreasts or anything like that, so when they're riding along this route, especially when we know they're narrow roads like Barber's Pond, does it say anything like, you know, bicyclists have to be two, two abreast?
Yes, when you come into no shoulder, you should start single filing.
That's, that's what I'm looking for.
Is that what you're trying to say, Nelson?
Yeah, I'm saying if we, if we know there's no shoulder and we're putting signage up that says this is the bike tour area, why aren't we telling them that this is the way that they, you know, we get speed signs, we get.
Right. And those, those law enforcement signs we can't put up. And those are the responsibility of the state or, or the local municipality. If you want to put up signage to that effect, you certainly can do that. But the organization that wants to put up the signage for the routes can't, can't put up those regulatory signs.
Well, then I guess the question would be, is the town able to charge a fee so we can buy those signs to put them up? Yeah, the, the, the whole goal here is, is not for this to cost the town any money and at the same time promote the tourism.
Right.
But at the same time, our concern is about safety.
I understand.
I don't want, you know, he talks about slowing down. I've seen people come down around those corners at Barber's Pond. They're not going to slow down if there's a bicyclist there. They're going to run them over because they're not going to see them until it's too late.
And I, and I live on a road that's got an 8% grade too. And as I ended, and cross traffic, can't see the bikes coming and they come through that intersection at 30 miles an hour sometime.
Yeah, I just, it's proper signage.
Yeah. Well, all I, all I can tell you about this, well, there's another thing to look at here. A lot of the cyclists that you see cycling in group are fitness cyclists. They're out to ride to get exercise. They ride with groups, you know, semi-competitively.
Yep.
Touring cyclists, as I say, our group of 10 came through here last year. You probably didn't even know that we were here because probably we passed through panel, those 10 bikes probably passed through over an hour span. And that's the way touring cyclists generally ride, usually in ones and twos, spread out on, on the road. I doubt that you will see, I, I know you won't see any large groups of riders because most people who tour don't like riding in large groups. That's why they're out touring rather than riding with a fitness group. That's all I can tell you. You know, I, I can't account for their behavior anymore than I can account for the car driver's behavior. Everybody's responsible to the law and it's a question of enforcement, whether the cyclists are, are, whether the laws about cycling are enforced.
Well, I think part of it is that we talked earlier is the training. You get a lot of people that are going on these bicycle tours and so forth, they really haven't gone through, looking at the laws of a bicyclist and what the rules are for them riding on the road. They assume they have a bicycle rule and the bicycles has no rules. They can go ride pretty much where they want. The, the real thing, you know, even with me, this two abreast thing, I didn't know that in the state of Vermont. But that's the sort of thing I think we could find a way, not necessarily to become the major enforcers, but making people aware of the rule so when they're riding in our town, that we don't have the problems of the three abreast and four abreast or the large body of bicyclists that might get hit.
Right.
And if we can find a way to do that, that's reasonable with signage that, that, you know, I don't know what our expense is with our signage. We put up a lot of signs to do with speed and street names and the rest, but I'm not sure if, if we're promoting to increase the number of these people that we want to go over our roadways, I don't think it's a bad thing, don't get me wrong. But at the same time, I think we as citizens should find a way to make sure that they're doing it safely.
It, I, I wish I had an answer for you. It's a challenge, it's a challenge all over the country. And as I say, we advise people when they, when they come to our websites, the place for them to get these maps, the maps that cover the entire route is at the website. They can download them and find the queue sheets that give them the turn-by-turn instructions and the map of the whole route along the way. On the website, we can advise them as to, just like we advise them about the tire size, we can advise them about the rules in each of the states that they'll be passing through. And we will do that. We also have a Facebook page where we talk about these sorts of things and there's, a lot of people check that before their ride. I'll see to it that we emphasize that they check the laws in each state as they ride through them as well.
And stress the safety issue.
Yep.
You know, it's for their good just as well as the, usually the person driving the car that hits the bike isn't the one that gets hurt.
Yeah, that's for sure. So.
See, I don't see it going through New Hampshire there.
No, it.
In New Hampshire, they have to register the bicycles.
I.
They have to learn the rules of the road, just like if you're going to go take a test to drive your car.
Yeah.
Hand signals, all this other stuff.
Yeah.
You got to do all that. Plus, you've got to register it. So you are paying something. Not much, but you're paying something.
Mm-hmm.
I see you didn't go through New Hampshire. They probably got better rules. Maybe they don't let them go double file. Because on these roads, you can't go by, you're lucky to go by one bicycle. And places on Barber's Pond Road where them corners are.
Yep.
If there's a car coming and you're coming the other way, I'm not driving a little Honda. I'm driving a little bigger vehicle than that, see?
Yep.
So if another vehicle, same size coming along, you got a couple of bicyclists there, you know?
Where.
And I got to stop a 5, 6,000 pound truck, you know? Either that or run them over, so you all probably have to stop.
Well, the, yeah. In, in fact, we only use Barber's Pond Road till we get to the top of the hill and then we turn off middle, on Middle Panel. Admittedly, it's narrow too, Maple Grove Road, but they don't carry as much traffic as Barber Admittedly, it's narrow too, Maple Grove Road, but they don't carry as much traffic as Barber Pond does.
That's right.
That's why we directed them off onto those roads, instead of using Barber Pond all the way to where it joins South Street. The, as far as the choice of route, we chose this route because we think it's got the most scenic route and the best bicycling that there is in New England. So that's, that's why the Western New England Dreamway was laid out in this way. And in fact, there's another route that is gonna go through New Hampshire, but that, that's not, they haven't laid that out yet.
What I'm, the point I'm still trying to stress is, two bicycles, they don't ride right tight together. They're, they're just far apart, at least. So they're taking up the whole lane. And if you wanna ride, and you wanna look at the scenery and stuff, it seems like you oughta be able to ride single file.
And, and-
You know, I'll have to talk to my representative and see if he can do something about that at the State House there.
Okay. That, that is the way to address it, because right now, they'd be within the law.
Anyone else have anything to add? Okay. Uh, what you were looking for is a resolution from?
Yes, it's on the back of the sheet that I give you here, or a draft resolution is on here. I can check that, uh, later to see if you, or, you know, if you decide to support this, I'll be happy to finish drafting the letter, and your, uh, any changes you wanna make to it, you can, you can submit to me.
What, what is the board's pleasure tonight? Do you wish to move on this? Do you wish to table it? Do you wish there are more discussions?
Well, I, I think that, uh, if we wanna do anything with this, um, I mean, Ronnie's brought up, uh, quite a few issues. And I think that the people that, I mean- This is, I don't know how many, how many miles is this through us?
It's about eight.
Probably about five, eight?
Yep, from the border, from the border.
But, uh, I do know on Brighton Road, there's two landowners on that, on that whole stretch of road. I, I think it's two. It might be, but the majority, but the majority-
Is two.
Is two. I mean, there's a couple other houses, but, but the, the prop, that, that stretch of a couple miles there, a mile and a half, or a mile, whatever that is, I think is, the majority is two landowners bordering. When you take out Barber's Pond Road and the concerns that Ronnie brought up, I think that the people that live up there, we should let them know that what this may grow into, uh, and, and just hear something from someone, if, if, if people have concerns. I mean, before I could make a decision on it, I, I don't think it's up, I think I need, I would like to have people speak.
Well, you-
I don't know how else to make that.
Well, I, I, I have no, uh, no trouble with that. I think, uh, we certainly have been on the air tonight, so people have seen it and heard it. If they wish to come in and talk to the board about that, or contact one of the board members, not necessarily come in on Thursday night, and let us know their view.
Or just notify us.
Just let us know what how they feel about it. There's only one person.
Yeah, well, we'll find out, Ron.
That's right.
With hearing that, I would recommend that the board cable this until a future date. And basically, at that time, you know, give a couple weeks or whatever for people to contact us, and then we can bring it up and make our decision whether or not we wanna have it.
Yeah, I, I think we should, uh, even go one step further. I think we should, uh, kind of put a, a phone number, uh, of town here, uh-
Yep.
So that if people wanna call, then call, then they'll take their name and so on, and say, hey, listen, and after, um, I don't know how long you, you people can figure that out, how long you wanna have people give them time to call in and say either yes or nay, or, um, say something, okay? And if nobody calls, well, then, that's very simple, nobody minds. Okay?
Yeah, well, okay. I'm, I, again, I'll say that what we should do is table this for a couple of weeks. Uh, get the people to contact us, they can contact the town office if they wish. Uh, certainly, it's eight two three zero one three two. If they wish to, uh, do a, a call, call in, or they can walk in and tell Linda, or leave, send us, send us a letter.
Letter, I don't, whatever.
Whatever you wish to do, to let us know what your thoughts are on this.
Right.
And, and we can, uh, I just don't wanna, I'd like to have it on the schedule, probably in, say, three weeks. Give them two weeks to get in, and in the third week, we'll have it on our schedule, agenda. So if we could do that, then it'll come back up on table at that time.
Good.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Hey, Bill, why don't you take mine? I, I don't need that. Oh, you got, oh, take it with you.
Yes.
Okay, gone up there, Mr. Transfer Station Supervisor. Could've got her already doing. We'll do this, then we'll do this. I throw stuff on the floor. Put that in here. Whenever you're ready.
You wanted me to elaborate a little bit on this, uh, paint?
Yeah, just so people know what they can bring in.
Uh, this paint care is the new paint law that's going into effect this year with the state of Vermont. And I believe this particular event, the B C R C is partnering with them to try and help get excess paints that people would like to get rid of, uh, out of the system. Uh, acceptable paints are house paints and primers, latex oil base, stains, deck and concrete sealers, clear finishes like varnishes and shellac. What they won't take is leaking, unlabeled, or empty containers. No aerosol containers, uh, no drums or containers larger than five gallons. If you have those things, uh, you contact the office or contact me, and I can help you, uh, properly get rid of those, if you have containers larger than five gallons. They will not accept any household chemicals or anything. Those are typically taken on hazardous household waste day. They won't accept any auto paints and whatnot, so. And that is this Saturday from nine to one in the municipal parking lot in Bennington, Vermont. Okay, the other big issue that's coming up, we, I met, uh, last Wednesday, and what I'll do is read this. This came from Breen Oakleaf, and she is the environmental analysis with the Waste Management Prevention Division, Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation. Uh, what we had is like a fifty-page draft at that meeting, and now I got this Wednesday. Says, "The A and R is proud to announce the newly adopted Vermont Materials Management Plan, formerly the State Solid Waste Management Plan. The M M P is effective as of June eighteenth, twenty fourteen. While the M M P incorporates the phase-in bans and directives of the universal recycling law, it goes further by addressing additional materials in the waste stream that should be diverted from the landfill. It incorporates tools to encourage reuse, recycling, and other preferred end-of-life management options. The M M P promotes the development and improvement of materials management efforts across Vermont so that consistent services will be available regardless of where you live or work. The M M P does this by setting performance measures for outreach and education and convenience for five material streams, recyclables, organics, construction and demolition materials, household hazardous waste, conditionally exempt generator waste, electronic waste, universal waste, and sludge, septic, and miscellaneous waste." This is all part of what they call Act One Forty-eight. We met last Wednesday, essentially, the towns, there's like eleven towns that formed what they call a SWIP, was a solid waste implementation plan. And my co-bachelor from the B C R C is helping us drive this, uh, these meetings, and, and try to help us get organized so that we can conform to this new act. The next meeting, if anybody would like to go, is set, uh, for Wednesday, August sixth, twenty fourteen, from four to six P M. Uh, we, that last meeting we had at the college there on Main Street, three twenty-four. Now, he, he isn't saying that in this memo, there'll be, there'll be a memo coming that will give you better information on that. But right now, what he's gonna try and come up with is some sort of an alliance. A lot of, or a lot, or other parts of the state have solid waste districts, which we don't have down here. So he needs to try and put together what, some kind of an alliance for all these towns so that there'll be some accountability and structure to be able to go forward with this. Because Bennington did its own thing, and is not in the SWIP, but, and Stanford is kinda out there on their own. But for some of these materials, I think Bennington and all the towns in the, in the southern part will wanna join together, and others, they, they'll stay separate. So right now, that's the biggest thing, is trying to get some kind of, uh, organization, like I said, that will have some accountability to it for all the towns and whatnot. Oh, I think what I should do, this hasn't changed, but to reinforce, basically, the timeline for this, is the universal recycling timeline. July one, twenty fourteen, transfer stations, drop-off facilities must accept residential recyclables at no extra charge, which is pretty much being done, at least in this part of the state. Uh, food scrap generators of a hundred and four tons per year, two tons per week, must divert material to any certified facility within twenty miles. And that's obviously your large, larger units. And July one of twenty fifteen, statewide unit-based pricing takes effect, requiring residential trash charges to be based on volume or weight. Now, that'll be something that will be coming up to the board. The, the first thing that probably the board will be asked to do is to either accept or reject this alliance that they're working on. Uh, one of the next things that the state is gonna require is some kind of, uh, unit-based pricing. So they're gonna ask for an ordinance, which I don't think is gonna be a big deal for Pownell. For some, some small towns, they still stuck to, if you go way back to when we, we were dumping everything over there, I don't think anybody was paying anything personally. Out of the taxes, we paid for an operator and some equipment, the various stuff. Well, some towns are still in that mode, and if they stay in that mode, they really aren't gonna have the incentive to recycle. So that's why they're gonna ask that an ordinance, and, and they've got a draft ordinance, I don't have it yet, that you guys can be able to look over and, and discuss and whatnot, but. So I don't think it'll be a, a big issue for Pownell. It's, it's gonna cover anybody that hauls trash in Pownell, uh, not just the transfer station.
Would this be basically a more formal process than what we do now? Because we do sizes and pricing and tires and so forth. We do a whole bunch of stuff that we state what we're gonna charge whoever comes there with that. So what you're saying is, is we have to make it an official town ordinance that has-
Yes.
The rules and regulations, but it's pretty much what we're doing, just putting it in words?
Yeah, and I don't know if it will be as well, if it needs, the ordinance itself would need to be as well-defined as the prices we have at, at present time. It will just basically say that, that no one's gonna pick up trash for nothing and haul it away, whether it be out of state, or out of town, or whatever. So it'll cover your commercial, anybody. Because originally, the, and I don't know if anybody in this town uses them now or not, they may, is somebody that has a one-ton or smaller, uh, vehicle. And originally, they were exempt from this, but they are no longer gonna be exempt from, from some of these requirements, so. Uh, so the other thing in July of twenty fifteen, recyclables are banned from the landfill. Transfer station, drop-off facilities must accept leaf and yard debris. Haulers must offer residential recycling collection at no extra charge, which I think is being done now with, with a number of them. Public buildings must provide recycling containers alongside all trash containers in public spaces, except for restrooms. And then food generators, food scrap generators of fifty-two tons a year, one ton a week, must divert materials to any certified facility within twenty miles. And part of that diversion would be possibly somebody like Henry would go to the farms with some of that food. That's what they're, they're talking about. July one of twenty sixteen, leaf, yard, and clean wood debris are banned from the landfill. Haulers must offer leaf and yard debris collection. Uh, food scrap generators of twenty-six tons per year, half-ton a week, must divert material to any certified facility within twenty miles. July of twenty seventeen, transfer station, drop-off facilities must accept food scraps. Haulers must offer food scrap collection. Food scrap generators of eighteen-ton a year, one-third ton a week, must divert material to any certified facility within twenty miles. And then July of twenty twenty, food scraps are banned from the landfill. So that's the-
When they refer to landfill, they're talking about the burying of-
That's correct.
Of waste, so, so they're not talking about transfer stations or collecting areas that we do.
And-
So it's sort of, a lot of that then doesn't really apply to our current facility.
That's, that's correct. And part of, part of what I'm assuming is gonna happen out of this, like I said, well, they organize an alliance and whatnot, everybody's gonna look at what we do now, and what we cover, which is quite a bit of this, and what we don't, and how we're gonna get there. Uh, that's, 'cause another thing is like with your construction materials, when they're, they're, they want that separated. And I, I mean, all I can do is speculate in some aspects, but as you know, Cam is, wants to open this facility down here, and he is gonna sort those materials. So in my eyes, if we use him as a hauler, then we, at the transfer station, wouldn't have to put in a number of different containers and have that separated ourselves. And, and that's my hope to-
We ship it right out, or to him, or to someone.
Or we may refuse to take it and ship, and have them go directly there.
Okay.
But I would, I would assume that that would meet our requirement, okay? Things like that, it's, you know, they don't give you exact, uh, answers to this, but it's the same way with the, the, unfortunately, the household hazardous waste, they are gonna shoot for, to increase those to four events per year, I think by twenty twenty.
Versus two?
Unless, yeah, unless we come up with another means of, uh, satisfying that. And that, that is also possible. If we can find a town within the vicinity where everybody can contribute, and have that open more often, uh, then that may satisfy the requirements as well. And that's, that's a hope. Well, I don't know, has anybody got any questions or whatever? I guess that's the, the biggest thing that's going along.
I guess my question is, how's things going at the, the station, uh, to help, so forth? You've been made aware of the evaluations?
I have. I have one individual's out on medical, with a medical situation right now. Other than that, I mean, I just had another e-waste pull done, that's going pretty well. It's the second one that we've done, and people seem to be happy with that and whatnot. Well, I'm assuming, as far as evaluation on that individual, that will, I mean, that can be done. It'll have to wait until he returns to-
For him to sign you.
Active service. And the other thing I'm gonna need is the requirements, that I don't have those, so.
Yeah, well, we were using this requirement for whatever the job description was that you, when you hire someone.
I didn't do that.
Yeah, well, you have a job description-
For me?
For your position.
I don't have it for the other ones, huh?
They collect, they collect the money, they handle the trick.
You're gonna make one up now?
We can.
That would be nice if we had one.
Well, I guess what I would say is, I'd put you on the spot to make up one, uh, simply because you know what they're doing.
Uh-huh.
So make up a job description, so that way there, when you talk to them, you can say, here's what I expect of the job, and here's how I see the evaluation goes, and what I expect of it. But, you know, we can make one up, but you're the guy there every day, you know what they're doing. Makes sense?
Yeah. No, you can either do it that way, or you can tell us exactly what they're doing now, and then we'll figure it out.
We'll write it down.
Okay?
Yeah, makes sense? Yeah, makes sense?
One comment on your business there, Hal.
Yep.
Don't you think all the communities and, this is for everybody, don't you think all the communities and stuff throughout the state, throughout the country, don't you think they ought to be demanding that these people that sell this crap, will take it back?
Well...
If you got light bulbs that you can't get rid of.
Yeah, well...
Things like that. You got paint you can't get rid of. I think if they can sell this stuff, they ought to incorporate it in their price and, and take it back. And that's where the legislature should be working.
Okay.
Not working on this other stuff.
And in part, Ronnie, they are. It's what they call in here, an EPR, which is an enhanced producer responsibility, which is in part where the, the paint law came from. The, the issue there, they didn't, they didn't cover all the paints. They, and, and from what I'm hearing, they're going to, uh, expand on that, especially spray paints. The mercury vapor bulbs, that is now a law now, and that also is part of that, uh, part of the producer's responsibility. The e-waste that I just mentioned, that now is law, and that's part of their responsibility, so...
You're keeping all that good news a secret? Just giving us the bad news?
You want this?
Fifty pages of...
No, no, it's, I mean, you...
We gotta take care of all this stuff.
No, no, you brought it up and, and that's...
The government should be, where we have to bestow all our money up there, they should be working for us.
And, and like I say, and they are in a number of these things, I, I would...
I'll give you a chance, Bill.
I would say...
Give Bill a chance to answer, but go ahead.
You want me to continue, or?
Well, Bill was gonna answer some of that, so...
Ronnie, you're absolutely right, and we've been taking these things one at a time. When you think about the e-waste, you know, everybody was paying for it anyway, but now there's, for the disposal, the companies are having to do it, now they're picking it up. Paint's the next step, this batteries, now a way to get rid of your batteries, and all of these are built into the purchase price, so that, when you cover it. So we are doing exactly what you said of saying to the manufacturer, we can't be in the time where you just make anything you want, stick people with the process and the disposal, especially of things that end up causing huge amounts of money to clean up after the fact. And that's what's behind it. And the other part that's behind what Hal was talking about earlier, our landfills are full. There's two in the state, one's in Coventry and the other's in Mottown. Mottown's about to close down and is going through all sorts of problems. Mottown's filling up, and when you go to our transfer station, the real goal, when you think about it, is there, there's two big bins when you first walk in. And those are the ones that are the most expensive for us to get rid of. And Hal and, and others been working to get more of that into the other bins where you break even or it costs us a lot less. And it's as simple as that, really, is to do that and to get out of the waste stream, the stuff that shouldn't be there. And that's probably why, you know, Tam's an especially good idea in all of their recycling, and they're into a new industry here. And so I hope that covers and supports what, you know, Hal was basically saying. That's exactly the strategy, is to take responsibility when you ship it off to the
Another, another thing you're gonna see along those lines is building materials that can be used over and over again. They're gonna try and get away from, obviously, you've seen it over the years, I mean, they used to have asbestos siding, which that's long gone and whatnot, but I think you're probably gonna see more metal studs and whatnot, because they can always be recycled and, and done, and used again, so.
What else, Ronnie?
That wasn't asbestos siding, that was concrete with a little bit of asbestos in it, just to clarify the issue. That was 97% concrete.
Concrete they do make again.
Three percent.
In concrete, they do make again.
That's right. I just wanted to clarify that, cause I knew a fellow that worked in that already made that stuff. See, until we're having just a friendly discussion.
You have anything else, Hal?
I don't think so.
Any other questions for Hal? Yeah, when you bring in the evaluation, send us one of your job descriptions too, so we'll, we'll be able to take a look at what that is. Okay. Thank you.
I had a job description for the transfer station people, because when the last person that we hired, of course, we hire everybody, that's right, a supervisor would not, uh, it all goes through the select board.
And I thought we...
We hire and we, and we're supposed to be the ones to get rid of them, if we do. And hire and fire supposedly.
Well, that's fine. But if you don't wanna do it, just...
No, what I was saying is...
I think it has one out there, Henry, I don't know.
There might be.
I'm sure there is.
Check with Linda, she'll tell you if we ran one when we ran the job.
Because there was twenty applicants came in when the last guy got hired.
Go ahead.
Position available.
Position available?
Working at the transfer station, that was the job description. Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Yeah, the next thing on the agenda to do is to make some budget adjustments. Everybody should have found in their folders, uh, the recommendation from our treasurer and, uh, looking at the reports. There's numerous columns where there was some over expenditures, and what we're doing is to move some money from contingency expense line to make these budget adjustments. If I could get a motion to make those moves, I'd appreciate it.
I make a motion that we shove this money around in different spots.
As, as recommended by the treasurer?
As recommended by the treasurer.
Okay. Basically, what the, it is, I'll read up there, please take $24,200 from the contingency expense line to make budget adjustments. This will leave $25,800 in the contingency if any other adjustments need to be made later, and this is for the general fund. And that was $24,200 from the contingency. You wanna take these one at a time, or you wanna do them all at once? Cause I'll read the other ones too, and then you can do them all, based on his motion. Okay, the next one was to do with the road fund, and that was to please take $22,550 from the contingency expense line to make a budget adjustment, that this will leave $27,450 in the contingency if any other adjustments need to be made later. And then there was one other request from the road foreman for an adjustment, which was to move $1,500 from one line to the other line because of the way it was spent. Okay? Those are the treasurer's recommendations. We have a motion to approve the treasurer's recommendation. Any further discussion? All those, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome. Do you, Linda, is that all signed? I'll take that.
Okay, next thing on the agenda, Mr. Newell.
Hey, David.
Hey, Nelson, hi.
On up, we'll put you right in front of the mic and the camera. The pressure's on here.
You know, we have a wide audience out there.
Yes, well, Cat TV ratings prove that the Pownell meetings are way more popular than the other towns that are on TV. You can be proud about that, gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. I'm Dave Newell, President of Will's Insurance. Some new faces up here, last time Nelson is back.
Yep.
How do you do? Enrique, we go way back.
Yeah.
That gentleman is...
You know Ronnie.
Oh, yeah.
Everybody knows Ronnie.
Won't take up too much of your time, we appreciate the opportunity to talk you about the town's insurance, and this is a statement of values, which is the property list we have for the town. We delivered our bid proposal to you last week, and maybe you looked at it, but just to refresh your memory, it's on the last page of this, page 11?
Yes, we did.
And there, that's the breakdown for the property, general liability, et cetera. The, if you flip to page two...
This is a one-year amount?
Yes, it is. Right, yeah. You see in page two, uh, the property coverage, and we add up the building and the contents, which is what's on this sheet here, uh, for all of the properties, and come up with that blanket limit of $7,578,415. So you have that available to you for any claim on the buildings and the contents, $1,000 deductible. We do include some other things, extra expense, we give the town some adjustment expense if you have to rent somewhere else when we're fixing a property. We do have flood and earthquake for you with some relatively aggressive deductibles, but you do have the coverage, $50,000 on the flood, $25,000 on the earthquake. An ordinance coverage means if you're having a claim fixing a building and the building codes are different, and they almost always are, we can help you with an upgrade with the $250,000 there. We have a property extension, which I didn't wanna bore you with those details, but include some other things like water sewer backup and some pollution cleanup coverage. That's the property extension. If you look a little further down on page two, we do have an equipment limit, which is the $471,230. And if you wanna go to page nine, excuse me, page eight and nine, you'll see the list of what we have covered for the town for accessories for the highway department, other equipment. It's a good idea to have Casey take a look at this every year, which I'm sure he'll do for accuracy, and you can lower these limits if you like or raise them. This is the actual value of these items now, what we're covering for you. Back to page two, we include the computer system for the town, which is what that $31,000 limit and some changes there with a $500 deductible. This does include power surge damage if you have that, and mechanical breakdown if it's not caused by wear and tear, which will help you with that claim. Next, page three. We do boiler machinery as basically equipment breakdown coverage, which includes all the town properties, including the sewer facilities. So if you have a sudden accidental breakdown of the mechanicals in any of those buildings, we can help you with, with that claim, $1,000 deductible. We do have some dishonesty coverage for the town, which is under crime there in two forms. One is we have a blanket dishonesty coverage for all town employees of $500,000. We have some money coverage for all town locations. This is built into the coverage for me, probably don't have $20,000 laying around too often, but it's built into the coverage, $20,000 inside and $10,000 on the way to the bank. We also have a separate bond on the treasurer for the same amount, which you'll see later. Liability coverage includes all town properties and locations. You have a million limit, which is now, we're still on page three, million limit per claim. Includes personal injury and advertising injury. We base the coverage on this, or the premium for it, for the acreage that the town owns, the 170 acres, which you see near the bottom there, vacant land on Swallow Hill, Lincoln Street, Dean Road. We do include sex abuse, molestation coverage for the town, and the employees and volunteers are covered personally for their town activities. Asbestos is excluded, that's thankfully no longer an issue here, hopefully for the town. Page four begins the auto schedule that you have. Million limit per accident for you for the auto schedule, including non-owned and hired auto liability, protects the town for use, personal use of vehicles for employees. The schedule goes four and five, where you see, for example, on page four, the grader, the first thing, you cover the, the physical damage on the grader with the schedule we looked at earlier for the equipment schedule, that's why that's blank, where it says collision there next to the, to the grader. That one and the wheel loader are covered under the, what we call the mobile equipment schedule, which we looked at on page seven and eight. Otherwise, we don't have collision to comprehensive on your 85 dump, but do on everything else, all the newer vehicles. Employees and volunteers are additional insured on this as well. On now to page five, this one's important to you, gentlemen, we do have public officials' liability coverage for you. Does protect your decision-making, wrongful acts for all the boards and commissions of the town, $2,500 deductible. Pleased to say the town has never had a claim on this since we've handled the town's insurance, it's been quite a while, so you're doing some nice work down here in that regard. We also cover the town for employment practices liability, which is the issue of wrongful termination of employees and sexual harassment in the workplace, failure to promote hiring discrimination, that sort of thing. Included with a million limit on that as well. Now, page six, we do cover the constables for you for law enforcement liability, for their law enforcement activities, $2,500 deductible on that, you have a million per occurrence claim on that. Down below, workers' comp has actually gone relatively well for the town. I do have a listing of claims that we can briefly review, but I will say in general, it's been good. The, what we call the experience mod is going the right direction there for the town, as you can see, all the way, at the high of 1.16, now to 0.87, so that is positive. And I think Casey's done a pretty good job of stressing safety for the, for the highway crew, it's working, I wanna keep that up. Page seven shows you the various payroll categories we have, and Linda does a fine job of slogging through these audits, which we have every year. We divide the highway payroll in two sections, one is what's, one's on the, the top there, street and road construction, that's the highway crew summer work, and then down, uh, near the bottom, 9402, street cleaning, which is a bit confusing, but that is the snow plowing in the wintertime, wintertime maintenance, and the rate is about half what it is for the highway rate, which is why we do that. Otherwise, the rest of them are relatively self-explanatory, the hospital veterinary for our animal control, do include the firefighters, covered for you under the workers' comp, all the volunteer fire departments, and that's based on a head count, which produces that payroll of $5,500, obviously they're not paid. Clerical, et cetera, the garbage work, sewer, and so on. Bottom of page seven, we do have a separate bond on, on Ellen as the treasurer for the $500,000 payment. She's not covered under the other one. We reviewed briefly page eight and nine. I noticed we're missing a piece of equipment on page eight and nine. That's the newer Echo, 2013. I'll follow up with Linda or Casey on that one. Can we add that one on, Linda? It may be a typo on our part, but we'll check that for you.
It was listed on another form.
Take a look at the auto schedule there again.
It was, it was listed under the commercial automobile.
Yeah, that's for the liability, so I'm...
Right, but not on the...
We'll correct that. Any other, and that's the 2013?
Yes.
Right. Caterpillar.
Okay.
I'll correct that schedule for you there.
Linda, I think on that 1985 GMC truck, I don't even think it's on the highway anymore, though.
I don't believe so.
I don't think so. It's just another one you can talk to Casey about, okay? I think we still have it, but I don't think it's been on the road for a long time.
Known as Black Beauty.
Yeah, okay.
Known as Black Beauty.
Yeah.
I did send Linda, I don't know if she circulated these, but this is good information for you to have, give you some idea of the claims record for the town, and I'll walk you through What I've done here is, um, in yellowed some sections of this, I can try to explain to you how this works. So you see the first page, auto is the first section, so that's the automobile claims. And on the far left is the date that the claim happened, and I tried to yellow in what happened, which is a little bit further down, you know, auto liability, collision for the second one there, and you'll see the totals, which I've yellowed in for these claims. First one was in 2011, the second one was in 2014, which is just this February. Relatively modest numbers there. Next page includes a backup claim that was in March of this year. And these are all closed, which is good news. The next section is general liability, and I highlighted that, I didn't yellow anything in.
That, that isn't very much damage here in the, as far as these first, uh...
Correct.
Nothing. I mean, it's, it's almost no accident at all.
Yeah, today's cost.
Yeah. So that was...
You've actually...
I mean, they happened, but that's all you can really say.
That's true.
Am I right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, you've had no general liability claims, which is good. Uh, page four, and this one was the biggest claim the town has... Page four, and this one was the biggest claim the town has had in quite some time, was the snow load collapse on the warehouse down by the old Tanneric property. Ended up to be 170,000. We're glad we could help the town with that. And that was in February of 11, so three years ago.
A lot of things collapsed in that year, boy.
Yeah, we had a lot of snow. Flipping a bit further, I've yellowed in the workers' comp section. The largest one you've had is the first one that you see there, which occurred back in 2010. Total on that was 29,000, there's some change, and you can take a look at that. It is closed, who the claim it is. Otherwise, the rest have been quite modest, which is very good. You can see the next one after that, and I, and the other ones that follow are quite small, which is good. That first one I referenced was a slip and fall on the ice, happened in February.
That's when they were fighting that fire, right?
Right.
It was up on that ice roll, where they had difficulty.
That gives you a general snapshot on the claims, and this is all of them for the last since 2009.
Yeah.
Pretty good picture, and again, the town has done well, I think, in managing, managing the risk that you have. I do recognize you're considering our proposal as well as one from the League of Cities and Towns. League is a fine organization, does nice work for the towns that are members. And I thought I'd give you some thoughts from me for what that's worth, as you're evaluating these proposals, on the differences between our program and the League's program. It gave you some bullet points on this, and the League maybe perhaps explained some of this when they were here last, at your last meeting. The League is a insurance pool, a self-insurance pool, which I think has been relatively successful, but it is supported by the members. And the possibility does exist that if the worst happens and the pool is short some bucks, the members can be assessed to make up the difference on that. So it is not an insurance transfer, insurance companies that we offer you, it's an insurance pool that the towns are members of. I think it could be potentially assessed for that. Whether it's happened or not, I don't know, and I doubt if it has, but that possibility exists. We offer insurance company coverage for you, and if one of them becomes insolvent, the state guarantee fund does back those up, so we can pay a claim for you if one of our companies gets into trouble, which is what I mentioned to you in point number two. Point number three, the rating in the VLCT pool is a global thing, meaning the experience of all the members goes into figuring out what the rates you have versus your own particular experience, which is the way we do it for you. Panel has done well, and we hope that that's paying off from an insurance cost standpoint for you. With the League, you're going to be lumped in with the other members. The other ones are perhaps not as critical. I'll point out number six to you, and you should ask them this, if you're, when you're talking to them again, they used to have a sub-limit for salting liability, which could be bad, meaning if the boys were salting in the winter, and there's a claim, and the town is potentially held responsible for what someone felt was inadequate salting, I think the limit was pretty low. Last time I looked, it was 20,000. Our coverage does not limit that for you. You know, we have full million coverage, million dollar liability coverage for that. Number eight, we do offer pollution liability for you, not including the landfill, but all the other locations of the town. And ours is a million limit, and theirs, I believe, is half of that, 500,000. Number nine, part of your auto coverage is uninsured motorists, which means that if guys are driving the town trucks and they're, someone has an accident with them and they're at fault, and that individual does not have any insurance or doesn't have enough insurance, then your uninsured motorist limit would pay for bodily injury for your driver, lost wages, that sort of thing. Our limit is a million, which is the same as your auto liability, and I think the League has got a lower one, it might be 250, which is the max that they offer the members. Number 10, I think, is a pretty important point, and they probably mentioned this to you, but they don't insure the firemen on the same work comp coverage as all the other town employees. They consider the risk too high, and so the volunteer firemen are placed in what's called the insurance pool, and they probably gave you a quote for that. But what happens with the pool is you're assigned to a company that could be good or could not be so good when it comes to claim administration, if there is a claim. And it would separate the town's firemen from all the other employees on another policy, which I think would be an administrative issue for Linda and others handling the claims. And potentially, the claim service that you'd get on the hard-working firemen may not be as good as the rest of the town employees. So I think that's something to think about. And we hope that the local service is helpful to you. The League does offer higher limits, they probably had, which I mentioned briefly in number 12, their liability limit might be 10 million. Yours is a million now, that's true. We do have higher limits available, but their limits could be quite a bit higher, which apply to all the towns, you know, that are in the insurance program. So just thought I'd show you that for some thoughts, and if you have questions or comments on this or anything else that we went over, happy to try to answer them for you.
How long have you been our insurer?
I could research that, but it's probably been 20 years.
At least.
Yes.
As long as I've been, at least 20.
Right. Enjoyed the relationship and working with the town employees.
What type of loss prevention services?
We do have that available upon request for the town, which would include inspection of the properties for one. We have instructional materials on safe driving, which Casey could use, and lifting, proper lifting, that kind of thing. I know the town's employees are busy, but that stuff is available, and we could give Casey and others some information about starting that off, which is all free of charge, part of the insurance package. I do acknowledge that the League probably does have rather sophisticated loss control programs available to you, and I believe that we probably could service the town in a similar way, but we're happy to do that upon request for you folks, which, and we're not going to make you do it, but if you want to do it, certainly we can provide information on that.
Any other questions? Thank you, David.
Appreciate it, Nelson. Nice to have Bill Bato back from the legislature.
Yeah.
Just kept him up there for about five months.
Yeah.
Busy here back home. That's a good thing.
It is a good thing.
That's a very good thing.
And when he comes here, he gets grilled more than he does up there sometimes.
He comes here. You have to admire that, he's sitting right here.
I know. Yes, we do. I get to ask the questions.
That's right.
You hire me to ask people questions, get the truth.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. You've heard the presentation tonight on this other insurance policy. Do you want to take some time to digest what you've heard tonight, or do you want to move on this tonight?
We need to renew by July 1, and there's a lot of paperwork to be done, so a lot.
So.
Next week, you're at the plant, and.
We have a special.
This paperwork normally would have been done by now for renewal.
Well, we could have, oh, we meet at 6:00 down there, but we could meet before that and do that. If you guys want to digest this more or not, I'm ready to do what you want to do tonight. You heard them both, it's up to you guys at this point what you think. I know I've got the other one here.
There's considerable cost savings.
Yes. Yeah, six months without, and you won't know what the rest of it would be until January. And then you'd be doing from January to January.
1,600 dollars difference a month.
Is that for the half year, is that for the full year?
No, that's, that's broken down.
That's broken down, down in the month, was 64 here, and.
So what's the difference?
I don't know if I got it here.
1,600 dollars difference per month, that's how I broke it down.
16,000, 20,000 dollars difference. I'm pretty close. 18,000 dollars and change, 32, so.
For the record, you should probably announce the.
I'm trying to dig it out.
We have 16,000 plus 32, 20,000 dollars, 19,000 and some dollars, okay?
If I kept that, I gave that to you, Linda, so I don't.
What are you looking for, the other one?
I'm looking for the actual bid from the other ones. I have there.
I think I've got it.
Those are full of them.
I have everything but the, you gave me yours.
I've got it.
I'm looking for is this right here. These two things. All right, basically, we have a bid from Wells, Wells Insurance, which is for the full year, July 1 through, through the end of June of 2015, which would be 64,403 dollars. That's the total estimated premium. Let's see if he had anything different, given that that's said estimate. What was it he gave us today?
84,000 and something for six months.
Well, I'm wait, I'm looking for.
It was 42,000 for the.
Oh, 40, excuse me, yeah.
From July to January.
Right, from, okay, 42, so for a year was 84.
I'll read that off too. I just want to make sure what he gave us tonight, this is sent back. 64,403 dollars, Wells.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
You're right.
Theirs was for six months, was 42,425 dollars. And that would be from 7/1 to 1/1. It's half the term.
20,600 for the year.
Okay, now the difference.
Well, yes and no, because you may get, didn't they say that they re, they give this money back if you didn't use it up?
They could.
Is that what they said, Vermont League of City and Towns?
There's several things they said that was related to money. One was the risk training that they provided.
Yes, but talking about the money wise.
The drug test, which will all cost us money if we send people to there. I don't know what those dollars amounts would add up to. But then the other thing was that you guaranteed a grant a year if you want to write it, which was roughly 5,000 dollars. And then they rebate a certain percentage, which they could not give us that night overall to the people that are in the insurance fund, now that, based on the claims that occur that year. So it could be substantial, and it could be nothing, because it's based on the claims. You know, when we made a claim for 170,000 bucks or whatever it was for down there, I would assume we would not have got a refund that year. Hey, so, so those are the sort of things that you have to take into play. The services certainly are much broader.
Assume that we still would, only because I worked for a self-insured company for a long time. And when you're self-insured, you've got that pile of money, that pool of money. Doesn't matter if the plant in one spot went over, and the all rest of them didn't. Whatever was left over was divided.
To everybody anyways?
That's right. By the group, by how many people? You know what I'm saying? How many were insured, that's what it was.
Total insured group.
Right, or price per.
She said there was a formula, and she didn't have it there.
That's right, it's a price per what they're all paying in. I mean, if somebody's paying in 200,000 dollars and we're paying in 40, say, well, we're not going to get it.
Well, what you're looking, what you're looking at is, this, one provides a huge amount of services that we don't have today in the way of risk management, and, and the other one hasn't provided that. The real thing we have to come up with is, so let's say you get 10,000 back a year, you're still 10,000 or more paying than what you are today.
And then you have to weigh that out, whether or not you would get more services for the 10,000. I mean, there's a lot of things you can look at here.
Oh, yeah, for that 10,000.
I don't know what else you would get, would it be worth 10,000 dollars to go there? I mean, you have to really look at that. But the only thing I can say about the League is, and you just said it all, there was a lot of, a lot of issues that was brought up, they could not, they didn't tell you the other night. They couldn't, they didn't have an answer. Now, the only thing I could say is, if you want to find that out, we'll have to postpone this thing and ask them for that answer.
And they did say that.
I mean, how else are you going to do that?
And they did say they'd come back and tell us that, they would find that answer.
That is right. So I mean, if we have those questions, let's ask it.
Yeah, the only, the biggest question I'd wanted to know was, what's the average percentage that's given back? To me, that tells you what your dollar costs.
I mean, you said that, and that's a very good point. I mean, it's, it's.
When you were talking dollars, you want to know what the real dollars are, you want to, you know, I, I'm sure we could write grants every year to get the 5,000 dollar max that you're allowed, put cameras in the back truck and other safety things that we need. So I'd say there's 5,000 off of it. Well, now what's this percentage?
If there is one.
Yeah, and she's made a statement there was, but she couldn't tell us what it was without going back and, because of the formula. So I would say we need to know what that is, if you want to really match dollars to dollars. You don't have to, we can make the decision anyway, but that, but that's one of the things that's unknown to me for the most. Now, the other thing that I liked about the LCT was that there's a bunch of stuff that they do, you know, with all this safety training, pre-membership, mandated CDL drug and alcohol random testing done regularly, would all of us happen to pay for it, for that? And we know we had that program.
I don't think we do it, do we?
Well, we did make a statement.
I don't think the town panel does it, do they?
Are we supposed to?
I don't know.
What's the regulations with that?
I don't know. I don't know. You brought it up, so I'm asking.
I believe we are. I believe we are.
I think we're supposed to do it at least once a year.
Are we?
I believe, I am not 100% sure.
I think our policy that these guys worked on, this policy you guys worked on, didn't you have it?
Employment time, time of employment.
When they, when they, when they were hired, but not a year.
Municipality, as far as I know, is not required.
Okay, very good.
I don't think that we are participating in any plan, which I don't know how we get away with it, really.
Yep.
I don't know.
Because everybody else that's got a truck is in the plan, even private guys.
Right.
So, but, I mean, I don't know, I mean.
That's something we could look into.
Yeah, and it's, I mean, they have CDL, so I mean, there's whatever the rule is for CDLs.
Well, and the other thing that I saw was this consortium of lawyers they have that you ask questions from for, to do with employees. I'm telling you, over the last couple of years, this town would have saved a huge amount of money if they had that. A lot of money was spent on, how do we manage this employee of the town? And I think that, that in itself is an unknown money thing, but, but as we know, there's some things we've talked about, concern with our employees and hours and a whole bunch of other stuff. It'd be nice to have legal advice that you don't have to pay 300 dollars an hour or whatever. That, that in itself is worth some money. So those are the sort of things that I saw on this.
They have to pay for it, no counsel.
Yeah.
I mean, look, you can look other places, go, advice sometimes.
Yep, but, and this one here basically says that it'll give you the advice, and if the advice.
Oh, I know.
Turns out to be.
I recall that very clearly.
They'll take, they'll, they'll cover that nickel. You know, that's, that's, but, but that, that weighs some dollar amounts. Now, again, but does it weigh the 20,000 dollars we're talking, 18 or whatever it is?
Yeah.
That's the piece, I think, you was, you know, you have to sort of digest and decide whether it's worth going that route, to see what it means. And let's face it, this is a six-month contract. If you don't like it, you can always go another way later. You know, that's, that's the other thing you got to think about. You know, we haven't tried anything different in 20 some odd years.
That is a, that is a good point, because in six months, you know, hey.
January, right?
That's right, January. If it ain't working out, I'm sure that Will's will sell us insurance again.
Speak, Ron.
I mean.
Go ahead.
I'm just.
Octane, is it? I don't know.
Too bad we don't have that information on the.
Well, well, why don't.
Can we ask and get there?
Why don't we, seriously, why don't, I mean, if it was brought up, we discussed it. I don't think we should override it. Does it make sense?
Yeah, we want to know.
You want to know a little bit more about it, Ron?
I do.
I'll go along with you. I mean, I, okay, let's ask those few questions. I, I'll go along with you, I mean, I, okay, let's ask those few questions, and, and let's, can we have that on our agenda for that next week?
Hamla, was that her name?
But let's see if we can't...
What are the questions? What is the percentage of the...
Well, basically, they, the date, the fund has returned over 16 million, they said, and what my question to them was, what did, what was the average percentage across the board to the members of that 16 million, or whatever the dollar amount was? So in other words, if we were paying this 43,000, what percentage was likely to come back? If any was? You know, they have an average that they've done that over the years.
Sure.
I mean, and, 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 you know, you might say it the way, I mean, they, so they claim, there was 96% of the town's casualties, am I correct?
That's right. All but 12.
All but, okay, was that, was that the right number, if I recall it?
By 12.
Huh?
That was it, because they got one more, that used to be 13, they said all but 12 now.
Okay, all right.
Which they all seem to be in the southern leg, for some reason.
Well, we was one of them, so it shouldn't have...
Well, I think what's happened is people are very comfortable with the people they have, and people dislike change. And the question we have to ask ourselves, do we want to try change or not try change? And I think part of that is figuring out what the real dollar amounts are, and, and I like the fact that it is a six-month, first of the year type contract. That myself gives me a shorter time to test. But, but again, I'm not saying, I like, I want to know more about the dollars before I make my mind.
Okay.
I'd like to, see, I mean, this was all presented, wasn't presented the correct way for me, because I'd have liked to have them both here at the same time. And the reason for that is, I mean, Noel, he said, he wasn't even sure on some of these things, that he wrote down was better.
Well...
I'd like to see what the, what the League has to say about these 12 items that he wrote, 13 items.
Well, we can ask, we can ask them that question, what's their response to the, what was pointed out to us?
I mean, this stuff was, you know, he says, he wasn't sure, so, you know, some of his stuff...
But he said that, Ron. He told us to, to check that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I'd like to see that checked.
So you could, that could be one of our questions, is we can provide them with this list, and have them respond to the list, item by item.
And if we get that information, then I think we're going to make a decision.
Very good.
Yes, so at that point, we'll, we'll have a response. So Linda, and if we can find out what the percentage is the other way, we know about the 5,000 dollar grant, and the courses, and the rest of the stuff, that's pretty well spelled out. I'd just like to know more.
Very good.
Okay? And then we can...
And do that next week?
Well, next week is the sewer...
Well, we can still do it.
Couldn't we do it? Couldn't we do it before or after?
Well, that's what I'm thinking.
We'll do it after.
It's just one item, so...
Yeah, so what we'll say is, we'll have our regular meeting at 6 o'clock, at which point, when it adjourns, we'll move into this special meeting to deal with insurance.
Select board meeting.
Yeah, we'll...
Right before it's a sewer.
Right after.
And right after, we'll have our select board meeting.
That's right.
For this issue.
For this issue, only. This will be the only one on this. Because if it's a special one, you got to say what it is.
Very good.
Okay, anything else? If that's it, I'll take a motion to adjourn, folks. Bill, did you have anything to say before?
Hey, oh, I know what. I guess, Bill, you helped get that letter put together?
I hope that addresses what you learned.
Yeah, for the Route 7, and, and the signs, and so on. So I guess we signed it, and it's going to get moved on.